Schwartz.
Here.
Tralka.
Here.
White.
Here.
Little. Leyland.
Here, and I would like to add that Mr. Little is at jury duty this morning, and so he could be showing up at any time. Would everyone please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on our actions here today? Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, the agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is received. Public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to comment on something that is not on today's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments.
Looks like we have a total for claims and payments, four hundred twenty-eight thousand nine seventy-four seventy-two. Looking through them, I didn't see anything that kind of stood out. We have a few electricity bills that came in. Kind of totaled a little bit higher than ten thousand, which is pretty normal, but that kind of gets the cost up there. We have health departments embark costs of about thirty-six thousand. And then, looks like the other thing that was on there was secondary roads, which always is going to bring in a high total of about one oh nine. Other than that, that was, that's kind of all the high dollar checks, so.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved in seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Item four, receive project updates from department heads or elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
Good morning.
A real brief update on our Cedar Wapsi paving project. Work is continuing. The main line paving on Cedar Wapsi was finished last evening. There are the filllets, we call them, the fifty feet of paving that we do onto the gravel road sections at Levercy, Streeter, Big Woods, and Burton. Those will start, that work will start this morning, and probably take two days. And then there is the new asphalt being placed at the Wagner Cedar Wapsi intersection. That will probably take three or four hours. And then the road will be closed for, we're anticipating three or four hours that Wagner will be closed while that work is taking place. And that work is being done to improve the site distance to the west on Cedar Wapsi Road. We're hopeful that by next Friday, or I should say Friday, the September twenty-seventh, that the work will be complete, weather permitting, and we can reopen the road. In other news, our motorator operators, we've done a nice job getting the rock, the mile rock placed this year. We have two districts left that are getting the mile rock. We're hopeful that another, maybe five or six districts can get another extra one or two miles, which would be excellent considering the condition that we were left with the roads in earlier this spring. So they are looking a lot better. Can I answer any questions?
So are they still on overtime?
No, we stopped the overtime about the middle of August.
Okay.
But that did help us tremendously get more mile rock placed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roy.
Good morning, Board. Roy Giving, maintenance superintendent.
Morning.
Just wanted to give you a brief status update on the Veterans Community Center over at our Pine Crest facility. We have worked through the occupancy questions that we had with regards to the city, and we have made adjustments with, through an addendum through the RFP process. Those have been sent out to the contractors that attended the pre-bid meeting for that project, and we are asking for those bids to be received by October eighth. And we're asking for the project to be completed on the interior by February, mid-February. And then we are looking at the exterior portion of that project, which basically involves some concrete sidewalk repair and an additional sidewalk. We're looking at a completion date of May. So all said and done, interior, exterior by May of next year. Interior, once we get that done mid-February, there should be no reason, though, we couldn't start moving the Veterans Office over to that area. So, any questions on any of that?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to item five, minutes approved for September tenth.
So moved. Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are approved. We have three hearings scheduled later for today regarding rezones for Robert Mills, a rezone for Richard Connor on behalf of Jeff Thode, and a rezone by Jim Bozier. Consent agenda. Are there any items anyone would like removed? If not, is there a...
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Next time, we could even have the suspension of the taxes. I think they could go under too. If no serious, some reason that, is Rita here? She's not here.
Lois is here, though.
Oh, they could go under that too, couldn't they? Put the suspension of taxes underneath the resolution.
Could they put it under there?
Yes. Yeah, because they're usually the same people, and, you know, they've already been approved, or less. Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Please answer as your name is called.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, proclamations. A resolution to proclaim the month of September as Hunger Action Month. I see you're here, Barb. I assume you have, okay, great.
Do you want to read the proclamation first, or you talk, or?
You talk.
Okay. On behalf of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, I want to thank you all again for your support. Thank you to Craig, who for many years served on our board, and to Chris, who currently serves on our board. We really, really appreciate the support that you give us. Unfortunately, for many in Blackhawk County, there are about fourteen percent of the population is food insecure, meaning they lack access to an adequate supply of food, and just over seventeen percent of kids lack access to an adequate supply of food. And our job is to close the meal gap and ensure that anybody who needs food has access to it. I am pleased to report that we have, just in Blackhawk County, closed the meal gap, but now our challenge is to keep it closed. And the challenge comes in when food, our food sources changed because of the nature of our business. We're relying on donated food, and you never know when that donated food is going to come. But thanks to a lot of community partners, a lot of community support, we have been able to close it. Now our challenge is to keep it closed. And on behalf of the food bank, thank you for the support that you give us in raising awareness to the issue of hunger, but also doing something about it, both with your volunteer time as well as your resources. In Blackhawk County alone, over two thousand kids are on our backpack program, meaning every weekend they get access to food through the schools. We provide the backpacks. They're delivered to the schools and then distributed out. We have seventy-three member agencies. We provide food to over two hundred seniors. On average, every month, three thousand households in Blackhawk County access food through the Cedar Valley Food Pantry. On a daily basis, over four hundred and sixty kids are served meals through our Kids Cafe program. And this summer, we provided over seventeen thousand meals and snacks to kids right here in Blackhawk County, specifically in Waterloo. Our community garden, which is a partnership we started right after we moved into our new building, we have been able to provide twenty-five hundred nutritious meals through that program as well. So every little bit counts that helps the food bank. I want to make a comment on the threat to the SNAP program. There is a rule, proposed rule change, and I know you're working, you're going to submit a letter on that behalf and talk about that later today. But it will, if that rule is enacted, many more people will fall off the SNAP rules, meaning they'll then need access to food, more food through us, and widen the meal gap, making our job that much harder. So I applaud you for stepping up and supporting the, not supporting the rule, but supporting the fact that that rule should not be enacted. And if anybody needs more information on that, just contact me. All comments need to be made, I believe, by September twenty-third. So on behalf of the food bank, thank you so much for what you do in your leadership position and helping fight hunger right here in Blackhawk County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And did you want Grant to read the...
If he wants to, that would be great.
Or do you have it?
It's not in the file.
Oh, okay.
I have an electric copy I can read if you'd like me to.
Thank you.
Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and in Blackhawk County, and whereas Blackhawk County is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and provide additional resources that citizens of Blackhawk County need. And whereas Blackhawk County is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank and educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues, and whereas nearly eighteen thousand three hundred and sixty individuals in Blackhawk County rely on food provided by the Northeast Iowa Food Bank and member agencies annually, and whereas the Northeast Iowa Food Bank distributed more than six point nine million meals of food to member agencies, programs, and food banks in our region last year, and whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, will host numerous events through the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in the efforts in hunger, in their, the efforts to combat hunger in their local community. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month in Blackhawk County, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
White.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Moving on to other business. Motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct the chair to sign for excavator-mounted hydraulic plate compactor in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents from Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company.
This was budgeted in our FY twenty budget for fourteen thousand dollars. This device is used to compact, fill, or dirt, rock, et cetera, around pipes or culverts. Can also be used to drive steel H-pile into the ground. We do currently have one of these compactors. However, it's very old. We don't really have many records on it. We, supposedly, the one we have came out of somebody's, came from the garbage. I don't know the full history of it, but it's at least forty years old. We can't get any parts for it, so we would like to purchase a new one. We did write one page of specifications, mainly that it has to attach to our current excavator, and we specified some hydraulic pressures. We did receive two bids back, the lowest of the bids being from Murphy Tractor here in Waterloo for two thousand and nineteen, for Akawa, for eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I would recommend that we be allowed to purchase this piece of equipment.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in seconded. If there are no further questions. All in favor?
Well, uh...
Just one question. I assume the old one. We're repairing it frequently.
We use it maybe four or five times a year, so, yes, we have been, our former mechanic was very good at keeping it running. However, now it's, like you said, time to replace it and dispose of the one we currently have.
And it was purchased used, wasn't it? Was it in the forty years?
I'm not sure of the origin of the one that we have today.
Okay.
We've had it for at least twenty-five years, but no one can remember where it came from, other than the former mechanic pulled it onto somebody, out of the garbage, is what I've been told.
We got a lot of use out of it.
It'd be stolen.
Yeah, no. I'm not, after the fact. Okay. Okay, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct the chair to sign for one overhead door in the amount of three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars from Overhead Door of Waterloo.
So due to the high wind events on, I believe, the evening of September tenth, the La Porte City Chapp, one of the four doors on the chapp did sustain a crease down the entire height of the door. This is an unbudgeted item. However, we did budget for the FY twenty budget for five shop doors at the Longfellow site. So we've decided to defer those door costs until possibly next spring, or perhaps not at all. Just, we'll see what our, how our budget comes in. But we would like to request that we be allowed to replace that door out of that proposed money. So we did call around and get two bids from Christie Door Company and Overhead Door Company. I would recommend that we take the lower bid from Overhead Door Company for the thirty-four hundred dollars seven, thirty-four seventy-five. It does meet our specifications and should look nice on the La Porte Chapp.
All right. Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Since they have any questions? Is the resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Okay, motion for the personnel rec for equipment operator two. Kathy.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, this is a full-time replacement due to a resignation that takes effect this Friday. So currently, this is a motorator operator, so we need to replace that person, and then this will cause some shuffling of personnel. Well, I imagine I will be back here in a few weeks asking for the replacement of equipment operator one.
Okay. Any other questions, Board? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, resolution, suspension requested by Diana Olinger. Taxes owned for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Amount is one thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. This is for Iowa Code four-two-seven point eight.
So moved. Second.
Let's see, Rita.
Lois is here.
Lois, any questions on this, or they're all pretty much the same, I see, coming up here? Okay, roll call, please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item B, resolution to suspend taxes requested by Beverly Beaumont for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and the amount is five hundred and thirty-five dollars again, per Code four-two-seven point eight.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item F, resolution suspension requested by Rebecca Cofrin on taxes for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Dollar amount is one thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and again, Iowa Code four-two-seven point eight.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item G is a motion to direct County Finance Director to advertise for a public hearing, nine oh seven, on Tuesday, October the first. This is on proposed additional action for the issuance of not to exceed nine million one hundred, one hundred thousand GO bonds.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item H, resolution to formalize Blackhawk County procedure for funding. This is in regards to our five oh one C three, projects may place in requirement instructions and applications on the county effective one October.
So moved.
Second.
You want that one, you want that one October or effective today that we approve it?
Oh, well, since it was going to have to be, well, approved today, but as far as it being effective on the website, I think that was why she probably put the October one date. That was the date we said we'd go public, and we did check with Ms. Peter on it, and she said...
So that first is all right, then?
So the first is all right.
Okay, any other questions? And again, these are guidelines that will be used during the budget process.
Look at it again today. I have copies for anyone, but otherwise, okay.
Roll call, please.
White.
No.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
Little.
Uh, yes. Item I, discussion possible board action, the time compensated for working in dual possessions for Helen Stephan, Billy Joe Heath as interim co-finance directors. And Lynda, I think this is yours.
Well, it is. I was going to say, Grant, I didn't know if you wanted to comment on, you submitted something additional too, but I did have something for the board as well.
I sent the board an email that said that the people involved said that they thought that the time was accurate, so really the only thing to change would be the rate, and they wanted to leave the rate up to the board. I threw out a number of fifty dollars an hour and gave the amounts that would result from that. I haven't had a chance to look over your proposal.
No, no, I was just going to submit, I just got it actually put together, so.
The old number, the last week that we didn't take action, was forty-five?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Okay.
Okay.
Board.
Well, I was going to comment then on the proposal or what I was proposing then, too. I took it, and I don't know if others have, that this is just something that I worked on. And I tried to make all the points very clear, because I know, Craig, you weren't part of the discussion last week, so I wanted to be sure we had everything there. The time period, and I'll just go over it briefly, was obviously the May nineteenth to August twenty-fourth. We all knew that the five percent increase was based on the eighty-hour week. I did want to comment that the eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixteen cents that, in this case, Billy was paid for that time period, that eight seventy-three, has been received, so she has done that. The rate for the hours exceeding eighty were forty-three dollars an hour, and that was the rate Grant had submitted earlier, so kept that rate. And he had done that because it was a mid-range amount for the finance director and felt that was approximately where Susan was at in her salary when she left. Hours worked exceeding eighty-hour work weeks, for Billy, it was sixty-three hours total, but she, they were very careful to break that out. It only attributed thirty-one and a half hours for the finance director duties. So I was proposing for the thirty-one and a half hours, the rate of one and a half times the forty-three, which is sixty-four fifty. And that reason just being that's typically what we do for others that are in the bargaining units. And the two thousand thirty-one seventy-five, obviously, is the total of that. And proposed also, this is just proposing that since that was for hours worked during the May nineteenth to August twenty-fourth, if that was the amount agreed to on the thirty-one and a half hours at that rate, the five percent of those hours would be one hundred and one fifty-nine for that total of two thousand one thirty-three thirty-four. I did put the other figures there, that the figure that Grant had originally proposed, the thirteen fifty-four, that's the second number, and the third is the difference between those two totals. Certainly can do the same with Helen's, but very same, only her, I'll just skip down, her hours for finance duties were seventeen point four. Proposing that the seventeen point four hours at the rate of one and a half times, which is the sixty-four fifty, be paid for one thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty cents. And the five percent on the overtime hours is fifty-six dollars and twelve cents for a total of one thousand one seventy-eight forty-two. Those are all gross amounts, as again, the initial seven forty-eight twenty was the original proposal, and for a difference of four thirty twenty-two. So that was just for discussion for today. Taking a look at...
Are you looking for action today?
Yes, probably, just to move on it, and if that's, like I said, if there's questions or someone else has something else to propose, I think we're all open to that, we said, if there's...
Board, any questions, comments? Is this it, then? I mean, this is the total baggage?
I'll move to approve this, this works.
And we still have Susan aboard yet, right?
I think she's on, oh, yes, for the most part, I think, working with James. I don't know if she's working with Billy and Helen's um, too, or I don't...
Yeah, she, I mean, she's typically available by email, but we, I mean, at this point, we probably meet five hours every other week. So it's really nothing.
Yeah.
And I think it was in last week's discussion that were something to change and those services be needed. I think Grant wanted that opportunity to come back to us and approach us if we needed to do something to discuss going forward in the future. But this is for those hours served in the...
But they're currently, that's the end of it, then?
Yeah. Yes, yes, for this position and that time, yes.
I'll second it.
What was your motion, Chris? Put some numbers with it, so we can have it for the record.
All right, I was making a motion that Billy Joe Heath received this additional compensation of two thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents, and that Helen Stephan received one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents.
And is that on top of the one thousand something they already received, Billy Joe?
It's on top of the eight seventy-three sixteen.
Helen.
That was for the fifteen percent, and Helen's was nine eighty-three eighty-three.
Okay, is there any other discussion, comments? I have the second, let's have, you got what you need in a minute, Grant?
Yes.
I'll have a roll call on this.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item J, resolution, the letter opposing changes to the SNAP program be approved. Chris?
So, we're going to change this a little bit and encourage everybody to send, instead of sending one letter, because I've been told that the volume counts, that we each individually this week send a letter. Is this, anytime that there's a rule change, this is a rule change by the USDA. There is a public comment period for us to register. I think Barb would be a better expert on this, but I believe essentially what they're doing is lowering the income threshold by about a thousand dollars for folks that automatically qualify. And so I think an individual or a single parent, it brings the income threshold to only about thirteen hundred dollars a month. And, you know, some of the effects that that can have here in Blackhawk County, I believe it's estimated that fifteen hundred kids could lose, like, free and reduced lunch. And as Barb said earlier, this month, they've worked really hard to close the food gap here in Blackhawk County, but this is just going to put us right back in the hole.
Right.
And so I'd like Barb to comment a little more.
Yeah, really what this rule change does is it takes away categorical eligibility. So how it works is if you qualify for one program, you're going to automatically qualify for SNAP. And what this rule change does is takes that away. And essentially, if you were getting SNAP, if you were eligible for a program, say at Medicare, free lunch or reduced lunch, then by putting, imposing this rule, you won't anymore be eligible for SNAP. And so what that does to us is it just increases the need for our services. So you're really putting it down, not to mention the economic impact of SNAP on our community.
Is that federal you're talking about?
It's a federal. It's a USDA rule, correct. And you are correct, the more people that weigh in and comment, the better off we are.
And so that, you know, anybody from the public can also comment as well. And I'm happy to, I will share the link on my Facebook page, and we can share it on the county's Facebook page. And we do have until the twenty-third to either comment electronically or by mail, but I think it probably has to arrive by the twenty-third.
It has to arrive to the DC offices by the twenty-third. That's why if you just comment through the link, it's a lot faster.
I was just going to come, Representative Kresic had sent us a letter encouraging us to contact the governor, as well as maybe the director. Do you think both of those...
I think the more people that are aware of this, that can comment on what, how it's negatively going to impact us locally, as well as throughout the state, is important. It's a USDA rule, so automatic, it's USDA that makes the final decision whether the rule is incorporated or not.
So for certain, get on the website.
Yeah, exactly.
And if you look in the PDF file that Representative Kresic sent us, there's some Blackhawk County-specific statistics that have been broken out for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, got any other questions, comments? Has anybody else got anything? So, let's have, we do have motion?
No, I think just...
No, I think that we're all just committed to sending a letter this week, so if we wanted...
You don't want a resolution, a letter opposing the changes?
Um, we, I think a resolution that we, that we all send a letter would be fine, yes.
Or comments.
So, I'm not sure, Grant, did you understand the...
Your resolution is that each individual supervisor send a letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Would we need to provide those to you for, we don't have to for the resolution?
No.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And so I'll second.
But I think if it's going to be on the agenda as a joint board thing, it probably should be a letter from the Board of Supervisors. You can always do one individually, but this resolution should be from the Board of Supervisors, and then you can do your individual letters.
Right.
Okay.
What's your resolution, Chris?
I would say, I'll make a resolution that we send one from the board and encourage everyone to send one individually. I would say, I'll make a resolution that we send one from the board and encourage everyone to send one individually. And I think Dana can come up with a simple language.
That'll work.
It'll work this week.
Okay, then, roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, item K, discussion on items regarding the solar project. Chris, I think you put this one on?
No.
No, I think I did this time, just because I wondered what Rory had to say, and I thought, too, there were some questions from last week.
Okay, Rory?
Good morning, Board again. Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent. Based off the last couple of meetings that we've had with regards to the solar project, several questions had come out of those. I do have some information to provide to the board, but I don't have all of it. What I have, one question was with regards to the insurance, what we could look at for an increase on our liability insurance. So, we've been working, primarily Dana has been working with PDCM on that. And from what we can see, looking at all eight of those facilities that we identified earlier on, an anticipated increase in cost of approximately thirteen hundred dollars a year is what we would see with the system.
What would that actually cover then, Rory? The ones on the other facilities are gonna be on the roof. Pinecrest is the only one that's gonna be on the ground?
They looked at each scenario and application, and so, what they look at is like earthquake coverage, vandalism.
And that covers all of it?
Those types of things. And then, if it's a particular system on a roof, that was taken into account as well, or if it is on the ground. So, they had all the information that we provided to the board with regards to each location.
So, the number's thirteen hundred a month?
That's their estimate, obviously, that is a estimate. Some things that could potentially impact that would be our interconnection agreement, that if it was moved forward, that interconnection agreement with Mid-American, that could have a slight impact as well. That would have to be sent over to PDCM for review, but again, that could impact that cost slightly as well.
Now, the Pinecrest property, the proposed location on the ground, obviously, we're gonna have to fence that in. Do you know what type of fencing and how much?
We have not looked at the cost. What we would do is we incorporate that, if we were to move forward with this, we would incorporate that into the RFP. I would envision a chain-link fence going around that whole area, is what I have envisioned, but.
All in our normal?
I would say no, probably no shorter than four feet around that area, possibly even higher, a six foot. Those are kind of the two typical sizes that you'd go with. So, but yeah, we would definitely want to protect that investment, and I think that that would be a cheap, inexpensive insurance on our.
And then, is there any ordinance or anything we need to check with Waterloo on that?
Again, as we move forward, every aspect of the project, the city would have, the permit portion would have oversight on that, and they would have some say.
But we do own all the land right now, currently?
We own enough land back there to accommodate all of those panels, yes. And just as a side note, we had several ash trees in that area. Within the last couple of weeks, we've worked with Conservation, and they've come over and removed those trees. So, we would have done that regardless.
Okay, I was gonna say, not in the anticipation of the solar, but just wanted them removed.
Yeah, they needed to go down regardless, but it only helps us if we do, if the board chooses to move forward with this. Some other questions that were brought up, we talked a little bit about the forty-year life expectancy. We are still looking at, basically, how did they come up with that forty years? Looking for that example that I can share with you. The other one, the big item, was the power purchase agreement. I will tell you that the particular vendor that we're working with to put a, the best cost estimate that we can towards this, there has been some very recent changes with regards to how they finance those solar arrays. For an example, they may be looking at, whoever they financed with previously will no longer be going through Eagle Point, so essentially, that finance charge could be a little less. And ultimately, that could help us out in terms of what our rates would be, that we would pay back to this vendor for our energy needs. So, I'm trying to get all of that information put together, so you have the latest, at least as an estimate, you have the latest to go off of. And I was hoping to have that for today, I do not, unfortunately, but I should have that.
What we can do is, we can put this either on the agenda every week or every other, every other week for discussion, and if there isn't anything current, then we'll just move on. That way, you have information, you can feed the board on that, so we can do that if you want to.
I like that idea, anyway. Gives the public an opportunity to speak at any time. We haven't really heard from too many people.
So, I think every other week would probably be proper, and that way, if you've got more information, you can feed to the board and the public then, okay?
That sounds correct, thank you.
Thank you. Board, is there anything else you wanted to add to this one?
Well, I just thought, I didn't know what the other board members were feeling about use of PPA. I know I brought that up because we talked about that initially being the one mechanism to pay for it, that we didn't have to use Country View funds, and if there were other needs or things out there in the community that we wanted to consider for those funds, you know, that it was there. And obviously, knowing that, I think the project we've kind of estimated has been the one point two million is what we've given aside, we had in Country Views Funds, three point two or three, I think James had mentioned to us. And not having some other needs, I guess, on the table, I guess I don't see that, but I don't see that as a rush to necessarily, you know, spend the money either. I know we talked about some of the things in the community, like mental health and different things, that we do have a real need in this community, and there might be some use of those funds from the Country View facility sale at some point in the future, but I don't know. And but if the board, for the most part, feels in agreement that the cash is the way to purchase this, I'm just open for discussion right now, because if they are, I don't mean to hold up the process, but it's just like.
I think we need to look at all the options on the table. I think we probably got a few ways that we can go on that. As far as any kind of a surplus from Country View, that might be able to offset some of our capital projects this year at budget time, if we have any, which I'm sure we will, that would then, in turn, help on the tax rate. So, I think we have an opportunity, too, to keep our tax rate down there with this surplus until we get it to where we want it. So, when it comes to funding for this project, I think we can look at two or three different ways and see what is the most logical way to go and move on from there.
I would agree with that. I think I was initially leaning towards just the cash purchase, because we do have healthy reserves, and you get the greater return on the investment. But if financing situations have changed for it, and those rates might be a little bit better, I think we owe it to the public to take a look at those options.
Okay.
And I do have a question for Dan, if you don't mind, too.
No, no, no.
You mentioned last week something about diversification, and I didn't know if you meant diversification, is it applied to buildings, or if you meant a mix of, like, solar and wind energy and that type of thing, or what particular?
I meant considering all energy sources. I don't wanna see us go with too many buildings dependent upon solar. I want us to take, when it comes to our energy sources, a hybrid solution, 'cause all days aren't gonna be sunny. Technology's going to improve with solar, I have no doubt, and storage of power. So, I just wanna, want us to have thorough discussions, keep the public informed, be mindful of the taxes that are paid, and that the money we can save, and make the best decision.
Maybe you want the water wheels.
Do we have a time that we'd like to make this decision by? Is the end of the board, all got different thoughts on it, or?
We can put it on the agenda every other week, we can put discussion, policy, action.
I would hope that we get there within a month's time, but we need to make sure everything's in the room for you, or we do it.
I think I did, was there something in the courier on this from our last meetings?
No.
From the first one, I think, I did.
Maybe we'll get a little bit put out there, we'll hear from the public, too, on this.
Yeah, we just heard from a few. I was gonna say, and they weren't supportive of solar. I haven't heard anybody that wasn't supportive of it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, moving on to a hearing, it's nine forty. This is on proposed ordinance number seventy-seven dash two-three-two Mills Rezone.
Motion received, place on file, proof of publication.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Motion away the first reading.
So moved, or second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item three, a motion to close the hearing, if there's no oral or written comments were received, place on file, or were there any written comments?
No, sir.
Okay? You're up.
Okay, all right. Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on August twentieth, two thousand nineteen, reviewed the request by Robert Mills to rezone two point one four acres from Commercial Manufacturing District to a Agricultural District in order to separate a dog boarding facility from an existing home site, which is approximately a half mile to the north of Osage Road and South Elk Run Road intersection. And the, yeah, the address is four three eight South Elk One Ward, and the request to rezone two point one four acres from CM to a Agricultural District in order to separate a dog boarding facility from an existing home site. It was moved by WRTS, seconded by RentFro to approve the request to rezone two point one four acres from Commercial Manufacturing District to a Agricultural District in order to separate a dog boarding facility from an existing home site. Motion to approve carried unanimously. Yeah, the one parcel containing the two point four, two point one four acres for the proposed rezone has been zoned to Commercial Manufacturing District since May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. The previous area, Zoned Ag, has been zoned ag since eighteen eighty-two. The rezone is designated as agricultural, and the future land use map become one of the Blackhawk County Land Use Plan. None of the areas in a special flood hazard area. The site did have a land evaluation score of ninety-eight and a lease score of two forty-nine. The applicant just wishes to rezone two point one four acres from CM to A in order to separate the dog boarding facility from home and other accessory structures on a lot. If the rezone request is approved, only point two six of the previous two point four acre rezone area will remain Commercial Manufacturing. The remaining rezone area is large enough to accommodate one lot that will meet the size requirements of the CM Commercial Manufacturing District by being greater than seventy-five hundred square feet and wider than thirty feet. Property, main parcel does have a high lease score of ninety-eight and lease score of two forty-five, which is considered a high agricultural site. And however, the ordinance also states that under very unique circumstances, these sites were developed only after compelling evidence, as provided zoning ordinance does list several criteria. Area's not been in active row crop production for fifteen years. Area's not conducive to production by reason of parcel size or shape. Area's compatible with surrounding uses of reason of similar adjacent requests, meaning any one of those criteria should not constitute approval. However, each request is reviewed in its own merit. The owners of the land simply requesting the two point one four acres to be rezoned to CM. The home, the dog boarding facility, other accessory structures are pre-existing. The rezone area's not been farmed for many years, and approving the rezone request will result in no land being taken out of agricultural production. The proposed rezone area is not located within the Blackhawk County Waterloo Air Land Use Height and Overlay District, and Piper noted that they're simply rezoning the site to the dog boarding facility and the accessory structure. The site had been previously zoned ag district, and the technical review committee did not have any concerns regarding this request.
Was there any opposition?
Oh, no opposition at all. I mean, basically, it's kind of a good thing, 'cause it's downzoning back to agriculture.
Sure.
I mean, they were approved of their dog boarding facility with conditions. Those conditions will remain in effect, but it's actually better, because it goes back to A, which limits the uses. And I do know parts of the property, they do, you know, mow down the hay and whatnot, and, you know.
Is that building used for the animals, then, I assume?
Yeah.
Obviously, it's just that not.
Yeah, like that little yellow area is right where that building is located, and it'll still be in compliance with the CM regulations and the former agreement that we had with the Mills.
Okay, board, got any other questions? Anybody from the public likes to talk on this? Okay, then, I do have a motion. Okay, I'm sorry, do we have somebody?
No, I, so.
Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Margaret Mills, four three eight South Elk Run Road, so just if there's any questions. We originally had, we originally zoned that under the guidance of an assessing firm that we hired, and we were given the guidance to zone all two and a half acres, and that's not really what we wanted. We wanted just the boarding barn and the turnout run for the dogs zoned Commercial Manufacturing, and so, we just have the opportunity to take it back to where we wanted it to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else got any questions? Okay, I do have a motion to close the hearings, all in favor, say aye.
Who moved to close the hearing?
I don't think.
Craig did, I think.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item four is a resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board to consider a vote on the proposed ordinance, two prior readings.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwart?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White? Little?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item five, this is the ordinance adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Schwart?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, ordinance passed. Okay, item M, it's nine forty-six. This is a hearing on ordinance seventy-seven dash two-three-three Thode Rezone. Motion received, place on file, proof of publication.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item two, motion away the first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. And item three, a motion to close the hearing, if oral or written comments were received, place on file. Is there any written comments?
No, sir.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Second.
You're up.
Okay, all right, yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on August twentieth, two thousand nineteen, reviewed the request of Richard Connor on behalf of Jeff Thode to rezone five point one acres from a Agricultural District to a AR Agricultural Residential District in order to construct two new single-family homes. And the address is south of eight seven three four Waverly Road, and the request to rezone five point one acres from a Agricultural District, TR District, in order to build two new single-family homes. It was moved by WRTS and seconded by SAC to approve the request to rezone five point one acres from a Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to build two new single-family homes on the proposed northern and middle lots. Motion to approve carried or two, with Sage and Nagel voting nay. Sage and Nagel had concerns regarding having two additional homes in an area that is heavily devoted to agriculture. The applicant originally was requesting to rezone three areas in order to build three single-family homes, but the applicant requested the southern lot removed from the project due to potential flood plain concerns at the beginning of the meeting. Parcel containing five point one acres for the two proposed rezone areas been zoned agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen eighty-two. The proposed rezone areas are wooded and currently zoned agricultural district. Surrounding area consists of vacant land, some trees, rural homes, surrounding areas all agricultural district. Yeah, none of the area to be rezoned is any special flood hazard area as designated by FEMA. A portion of the southern lot is located in the five hundred flood plain. The firm panel number one nine zero one three C zero one five five F was adopted July eighteenth, two thousand eleven. It should ever be noted that only fifteen percent of the proposed southern rezone area is located in a special flood hazard area, according to a preliminary map that was provided by FEMA. The preliminary flood plain map is anticipated to be adopted by the Blackhawk County in two thousand one or two thousand twenty-two. This is an update that was recently done by FEMA. It's still kind of going through the review process, but eventual, it'll come back to you folks for, you know, for basically an update to the, you know, flood plain regulations. The applicant is proposing to rezone five point one acres from A to AR in order to build two new single-family homes. The proposed rezone areas meet the size requirements for the AR Residential District by being greater than one point five acres in size and wider than a hundred fifty feet. The area is heavily wooded and has not been farmed for over twenty years. The applicant noted they plan to remove as few trees as possible if the rezone request is approved. Northern area will continue to be owned by the present landowner. He plans on selling it to a relative. The second lot would be sold to the public. Staff made the applicant. The second lot would be sold to the public. Staff made the applicant aware originally of the southern rezon area has a small portion of the lot within the hundred-year floodplain, um, according to FEMA's preliminary floodplain map, but eighty-five percent of the lot is still buildable and outside of the floodplain. Um, Hyberger noted the site had three previous rezon requests that were denied by the Board of Supervisors on July nineteenth, nineteen ninety-four, um, also on, um, June thirteenth, nineteen ninety-five, and on August twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-six. Rezon was denied on all three occasions due to heavy traffic associated with Waverly Road. Uh, these, um, traffic concerns have been alleviated due to the reconstruction of Highway two eighteen. Um, Ryan Brennan noted that the need to apply for two driveway access permits to the engineering office. Uh, the technical review committee did not have any, um, have any issues with the request. And also kind of, as I mentioned, the floodplain, so, so these are the rezon areas. There was three, but the applicant decided to just change to two, and I'll show you why. Um, this is the current floodplain right now, um, that's in effect, um, the two thousand eleven, uh, map. And, uh, basically, right now, there's just a little sliver, but that's five hundred-year floodplain. We don't regulate the five hundred-year floodplain. Uh, this is the new proposed one. Um, the southern lot was going to go directly to the south of that, but yeah, there's a lot of blue there. So they pulled out of that one. Uh, the other rezon area to the north, you know, um, eighty-five percent of it is out of the floodplain, you know, and if, uh, they wanted to, they could, you know, bring in a little fill that's out of the floodplain to raise the site up a little bit, you know. Um, I guess that would be, you know, up to whoever purchased the lot. Uh, but I just kind of wanted to, we're, uh, um, pretty much with all of our planning and zoning meetings, we always refer back to this preliminary map because these changes are going to happen in the future. So we want to get one step ahead of it and also, you know, kind of best information available for you folks and the Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to current floodplain regulations and future floodplain regulations.
How bad is the debt area? You got water and a wave?
Um, I do believe the, um, I don't know, uh, do you want to speak to that about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Jeff Thode, uh, resident, uh, family member at eighty-seven thirty-four Waverly Road. Um... Current, in oh-eight, the water came about right at this corner, right here. I don't know if you can see the cursor up.
Yeah.
There's a natural swale that kind of comes right through this whole area, across the road, uh, right, approximately right here. And that was basically all that in oh-eight. And then, uh, like, uh, stuff mentioned, basically, uh, due to the, uh, information provided in this map, um, we did go ahead and pull that, uh, request of that lot off. Um, obviously don't want to have anybody have to deal with that issue in them, so...
Which is your, clarify?
Uh, would probably be city of Janesville.
That, uh, other than the two that voted against, was there any opposition there that night?
Uh, yes, yes, sir, there was. There's a, um, a neighbor that is, um, you can kind of see their farm operation where the, the cursor is.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they're, uh, basically concerned, you know, that having houses out there could potentially impact, you know, their ag use, you know, but, but it shouldn't because ag is before everything in, in Iowa. So that's always the number one concern, you know, is to protect, you know, ag uses. Um, but, uh, but yeah, they, they, they were opposed to the request, and that was the, the landowner, um, where all the, where, where you can see is a active farm operation.
That was the only one, though?
Oh, gosh, that I can recall. I can't remember if they're, I think, gosh, I think it was just them.
Yeah, is there anybody from the public like to speak on this?
For or against?
Either or. But please state your name and address.
I'm William Hess. I live at seventy-nine-eleven Waverly Road by the gun club. My wife and I have farmed and lived in the area for thirty-eight years. Um, we, uh, very appreciative of what the Board of Supervisors and county engineering has done in northwest Blackhawk County with the new bridge and, and roads and things. But anyway, uh, we farmed in the area for a long time. Uh, my son has come on board recently as a young farmer, and he has his own operation along with us. We farm on the immediate, uh, east edge of the property. Um, it's in a family trust, but we farmed it for many, many years. Uh, my son farms on the south edge of the property. Um, I have a friend that has a, a fruit and vegetable stand and produces those products down there. I have another friend, farmer, that lives, he doesn't live there, but he has a farm, a grain and cattle operation on the southwest corner adjoining property. My brother lives across the road. He's the farmer in question that has the problem with grain dryer noise and dust. He has potential for, to raise hogs again if he, if he so desires. And also, we own a farm, my wife and I own a farm within five hundred feet of the northwest corner of the Thode property. So you can see that the property is surrounded by agriculture. Um, we've made a good living, uh, operating those acres over the years. And so we're concerned about, you know, complaints from, uh, our activities such as spraying, applying fertilizers and, and hydrus. Uh, there's some livestock in the area. There's dust and noise complaints. And, and, you know, we live with that every day, but it's, and it's not getting any better. I also wanted to point out, uh, I have a soil survey map that was written years ago. The maps don't change, but what has changed is, is you guys have adapted the CSR two mode of, of evaluating prop- or land, specifically soils. And what concerns me is there is a large area of, of a wyota soil on this property. It has a CSR two of ninety-seven. It's very rare. You can't find it all, you know, there's only one percent of total Blackhawk County soils that, that contain this, that have, that have wyota. So one percent. And the north rezon area, more than half of that lot is wyota soil. And so, you know, the, the soil is, uh, is a thick topsoil layer. It's fertile. You can crop it continuously. It holds moisture, and it's well-drained. It's almost, it's almost like potting soil. It is so perfect. So you guys need to check out the CSR two for the property. Um, you know, it's important to preserve that soil. So we are opposed to, uh, housing at this site, and I urge you to, urge you to deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else like to speak? Please come to podium, state your name and address.
I'm, I'm Pat Galis. I'm here for the...
Okay.
This is a petition that was presented at P and D. Again, I'm Pat Galis. I'm here on behalf of Chuck and Lisa Hess. They are the owners of the farmland directly west of the requested rezon land. Um, I was also the attorney that was involved in ninety-four, ninety-five, and ninety-six when Mr. Thode attempted this rezoning at that time as well. Um... Nothing has changed with regard to the neighborhood as it relates to farming or agricultural use. Mr. Thode has, has chosen not to farm the land in question, but that's been his decision. Um, you'll note that the land directly east of the rezon request, that's land that, that Bill Hess farms. I would point out that it too is a small tract of real estate, but it's clearly farmable. So is the land that Mr. Thode requests to be rezoned. The other interesting thing, and I want to make about three points as all, I want to do it quickly, is that, that all the land surrounding the rezon request in ninety-five and ninety-six was farmland. It still is farmland. The only people that are going to be, um, adversely affected by this rezoning request are the neighbors, all of whom have, have signed that petition. Mr. Thode does not own land the east or to the west of this rezoning request. He owns the land in that narrow strip. We, we may seem harsh in saying we oppose this rezoning request, but let's remember that Mr. Thode, when he purchased this land, knew it was zoned A-one. Okay? So Mr. Thode's request now to improve his position and situation financially to the detriment of his neighbors should weigh heavily on what the supervisors decide with regard to this rezoning request. There is a serious traffic issue with regard to, to Highway two eighteen. Yes, the new main Avenue of Saints corridor has been put in place, but in terms of local traffic, in terms of local, local traffic, the, this, um, Waverly Road is used extensively, and it's used by all the farming equipment that needs to travel north and south because due west of this parcel is the Cedar River. Due east is the Avenue of the Saints. So all the agricultural equipment has to travel this road, which means white equipment, people, oncoming traffic coming, and people coming up behind. And it may seem like a real small amount, just two more mailboxes, but two more mailboxes mean two more potentials for accidents when a, when a farmer has to swerve out into the oncoming lane to miss that, as well as additional traffic for people coming and going to these parcels. It may seem like a small event, but in the grand scheme of things, it's a much bigger effect on the neighboring property owners, not just, not just my client and his brother Bill, but all those who, who traverse Waverly Road. The other point that I want to make is the precedent that you would be setting by allowing a rezoning of this, of this type. Because if farmland can be sold for thirty-five thousand dollars an acre, forty thousand dollars an acre for a developed lot, what's to prevent you from allowing my client or his brother or any other neighbor that owns land along Highway two eighteen to come in and say, "I'm gonna, I'm just gonna let that grow to weeds for a while, come back in, say it hasn't been farmed for a few years, and now I want to plot a, I want to do a minor subdivision." I think that, I think that we need to take into consideration why it's zoned ag. We are an agricultural state. This land could be farmed if Mr. Thode had wanted to farm it, which is what its intended use was. Um, the character has changed, but only because that's what Mr. Thode wanted it to be. That doesn't make him a bad guy. It just means that the real estate has remained the same as it could be used under existing zoning regulations since this was shut down and, and denied back in the mid and late nineties. I appreciate your time very much. This is a, this, I, I understand, when I first looked at this, I thought it was petty, but, but it is a very, very real concern to those who make a living farming in and around this area. We understand that Mr. Thode would like to have his son come purchase this northerly lot and build a house there. Frankly, we don't have a problem with that, but we also don't have any control over that. We don't know who or what will be coming to the area. Um, this is a large-scale farming operation. It looks rather small when you look at it from this aerial view. Um, but there's significant grain storage there. There's grain drying, um, heavy equipment coming and going, um, twenty-four hours a day when the, when the season is, is, is busy. So let's not forget that, that we are an agricultural state. That, you know, the, the term we used to use back in the nineties was urban sprawl, but it's still appropriate in this case, just like it was back in the nineties. So with all due respect, uh, we do request that you, um, deny Mr. Thode's request and keep this zoned agricultural. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
You had a petition that you presented. I'm assuming that wasn't presented, any of that information at the UPZ meeting?
It was.
It was, okay.
It was.
What do you, what do you think the four commissioners voted in favor of it?
I think they, I think probably they looked at it the same way that I did initially and said, "What the heck? What's wrong with two more houses out there?" But you have to take into consideration the greater effect it has on the neighborhood. I think it would be significantly different if Mr. Thode owned the land immediately east of him. What he's parcelling off is his own property. He's, but he, his request is dramatically affecting those who farm on either side of him, particularly with spray. I mean, nobody likes to spray, but it is a, it's, it's a real part of agriculture. The dust, the dirt, and, and the, and the, for anybody who's driven Waverly Road with the equipment that goes down Waverly Road and has gotten behind it or tried to pass it as it, as it wants to turn left, it is a real concern. Um, and to put additional residents in that area, um, I, I think is just a terrible, terrible mistake.
Is those two areas that are in question for rezon ever been in production?
I believe they were before.
How long ago?
Well, not since ninety-five, if, if, if they're, if the records are correct. But I can tell you, all the land around it has been farmed.
How long have you owned it, Mr. Thode?
Um, probably the ninety-five date. I, I don't remember exactly.
But it goes back to the nineties.
Somewhere around there.
Okay. Board, you got any other questions? Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I was just waiting if anybody had any other questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board, anything? And this was four to two, Zach, they passed it?
Yeah, yeah, let's, how was it?
Yep.
Four to two. Okay, Board, um, if there's no more questions than anybody else, I want to make sure everybody had the opportunity. Go ahead.
Um, just wanted, just to address a couple of those concerns. Um, basically, I am the, the son of Mr. Thode, and I am the one that is interested in this, uh, middle property here. Uh, growing up on the property, so I have been the neighbor for the past twenty-five years and have not had a concern with the farming operation alongside that. Um, he did mention his family members have, uh, adjacent properties. We are basically requesting the same thing, a family member moving back home, uh, to have that area. Um, if there was a concern of traffic and dust and dirt, that has not been my issue. I wouldn't be interested in coming back to that property if that was the case. Uh, same with the traffic concern. The traffic has never really bothered us for the last twenty-five years. Um, it hasn't bothered me now with the, uh, for, the Avenue of the Saints has basically removed all the day-to-day traffic for the most part. Um, there's additional residents from Janesville that come down to C fifty-seven occasionally. Um, but with the, uh, out there in the Janesville area, that's also greatly improved to access to, uh, two eighteen, which has limited the traffic on that property. Um, basically, the production of the property is, we have never, uh, had any production with it. My parents, the previous owners may have had that property, but, uh, returning it back to a farm, uh, would be a financial liability on, a major liability of removing all those trees and bringing in excavators, which then would greatly displace the soil, uh, in there with all the tree, tree balls and everything like that. That's where, uh, we basically propose that the best use of the land, the, the current use is the, the two properties with the limit of, uh, disruption, or least disruption of the trees as much as possible. That is one of the biggest reasons why I'm interested in that property is the wooded area. Um, a little bit of privacy and everything along that lines.
Okay, thank you. So, any question? Where is, um, Rogers Vegetable Market in relationship to all this?
I don't know if this map will go far enough down. It is about where the Blackhawk County sign is.
Okay.
Quite a ways down there.
At next intersection.
No.
And then there is a single residential property, uh, right, actually two residential properties, to the north of our property as well. And then, uh, just to also kind of stay consistent with how old two eighteen has been from basically north Cedar all the way up, there's been addition over the last twenty years of several homes along the old two eighteen, uh, in between... the old 218 in between North Cedar and Janesville. We're just basically asking to stay kind of consistent with that as well, so...
Okay, thank you very much. Board, any other things? Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to close the hearing? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four is a resolution to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please? Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Item five is ordinance adoption. Ordinance number 36 is amended. And again, this is...
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more questions or comments on this? Okay, roll call, Mr. Veder. White?
No.
Schwartz?
No.
Chalka?
No.
Little?
No.
Okay, ordinance failed. Okay, moving on. The time is 10:12. This is a proposed hearing number 77-234, the Bogir rezone. I want to say rozone.
Motion received and placed on file, proof of publication.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion waived at first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item three, a motion to close the hearing as oral or written comments were received and placed on file. Were there any written comments? No, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Seth?
All right. Planning and Zoning Commission had its regular meeting on August 20th, 2019, reviewed the request by Jim Bogir to rezone 1.6 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres, approximately 2,250 feet north of the Mark Road and Butler Road intersections. The address is 6410 North Butler Road. The request to rezone 1.6 acres from A to AR Residential District to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres. It was moved by Nagel and seconded by Wertz to approve the request to rezone 1.6 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres. Motion to approve carried unanimously. The parcel containing the 1.6 acres of... For the proposed rezone area has been zoned agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning warrants in 1982. The rezone area is currently zoned agricultural district and has a home on the property. The surrounding area consists of vacant land, some trees, homes, and some farmland. Surrounding area is zoned agricultural district to the north and south, Butler County to the west, and A Agricultural District to the east. The rezone area is designated as agricultural in the future land use map. Surrounding area is designated as agricultural to the north, southeast, and west. None of the land in rezone area is located in floodplain. Site has a land evaluation score of 73 and least a score of 238, and this just indicates moderate agricultural value. Applicant's home was built in 2002, and the 15-year waiting period to request a rezone for a minor plat for a home built on 35 acres has expired. Should also be noted that a property at 8521 Kimball Avenue was approved for a rezone and minor plat request after the 15-year waiting period expired to request a rezone or minor plat by the Board of Supervisors on July 17, 2018, and on... And then, as well, on September 4th, 2018. In addition, three other properties built on 35 acres at 10721 Mark Road, 10615 Mark Road, 10211 Mark Road. Were all recommended for unanimous approvals by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on July 16, 2019. The property at 10721 Mark Road met the 15-year requirement. The properties at 10615 Mark Road and 10211 Mark Road both received variances to the 15-year provision by the Board of Adjustment on May 30, 2019. The Board of Supervisors at the regular meeting on August 13, 2019 unanimously approved the rezone and minor plat request for 10721, 10615, 10211 Mark Road. Proposed rezone area is not located in the Blackhawk County Waterloo Airport Land Use Overlay District. Hyberger noted that they are simply rezoning the site so that the home could be split off from the main parcel in the future. Technical Review Committee did not have any concerns with the request.
Hey, Board, any questions? I think we're familiar with this. Does anybody want to speak to this from the audience? It's smart. Okay, Board, is there anything else? Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion... Or we do have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four is a resolution to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call, please. Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little? Yes. Item five, ordinance adoption.
Second.
Any questions on this? Roll call, please. Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little? Yes. Adoption passes. Thank you very much, Seth.
Thank you.
Okay, item 10 is enter reports or information from the Board at this time.
I'd just like to congratulate Supervisor Chalka on his announced retirement from as Chief of Police or LU PD. I believe it's a 30-year career in law enforcement that started at the county level in Colorado as a sheriff's deputy. And so, I just thank you for all your years of service and look forward to continuing to work with you in this capacity.
Thank you.
It ended in November, correct?
November 30th.
November 30th. Okay, well, we all share that thought. Anybody else? Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you. Old turkey, you gonna eat that turkey? You went west.